Mr. Caldwell's absent. First item of business would be the approval of the January invoices. Need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Solsky.
My second.
Second by Ms. Mizell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion approved. Approval of the January 12, 2017 minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for January.
Motion by Ms. Mizell.
Second.
Mr. Moran? Second by Mr. Moran. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. Approves all the February agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Shirley. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. As for postponement withdrawal, none, Joe?
None.
No items. Consent agenda? We're gonna put that one on the consent, Joe?
Joe? I assume some of you see here from the neighborhood or in the process, but Matt and Megan also pointed something out that might be a variance on.
Okay, so we have nothing on the consent agenda, right? Okay. So moving right along, we have no old business, the new business is PDP 2017-01 Tracy's Landscaping Supply.
All right, this is a B2 property on US 460 down by the Elkhorn. It's owned B2, it's adjacent and behind Arby's, it's an old kind of metal barn that's been there for a while. There's been a number of businesses kind of operating on this property for a number of years. The application tonight is for a landscape supply business. They're gonna reuse the existing metal barn and they've already actually paved a lot of the site. It was gravel previously, had a gravel drive and storage of equipment vehicles back there previously. This is the site, it's this lot right here, there's five lots that actually get their access off the main drive. Arby's is the only business there now, I mean the only kind of operational business that's built out. It has a paved driveway to the entrance to Arby's, beyond that it's gravel that serves the Morgan property which is, I guess, in two lots, both vacant. They've done some filling there in the last couple of years and then there's a parcel in the rear and then this is the subject property. They have paved the lot, they've built these kind of mulch bins, material bins for the landscape business out of large concrete blocks that they've stacked eight feet high. So there's an eight foot wall on the perimeter, they gated it and there's two entrances that they've put in the gates. The rest, this area is all paved, there's grass really in this area and that's the only grassy area on site. The application shows landscaping, meeting all our requirements except for the one, there's one issue that Matt and Megan paved, pointed out. I put in my staff report that loading and unloading areas are exempt from our interior VUA landscaping requirements. And we have interior perimeter landscaping, they have shown all the landscaping around the perimeter, but the interior, I only counted this area used for customers, customer parking to calculate the interior VUA. We do exempt loading and unloading areas which is the basically the remainder of the site in industrial districts, but our zoning ordinance says only industrial districts are exempt from loading from interior VUA and loading and unloading. I applied it to this site, it is more of a kind of industrial type use where there'll be front end loader on site and, you know, equipment stored outside. So they will need a variance to the interior VUA, I didn't call it out in my staff report. The other issues that I raised in my staff report, it's in the floodplain, they have paved areas of the floodplain. Because of that they'll need a floodplain permit and they have applied for that permit and I believe it's gonna be issued soon, but they'll need to get that permit before final development plan is approved. The other issue we talked about at workshop is this gravel driveway. We've typically not allowed any gravel in commercial lots, so if there's gonna be a public use of the, of the drive and the parking, we always require it to be paved either with, in hard surface, either concrete or pavement. They are, in my staff report I called out, if this second entrance is gonna be used by the public, it should be paved all the way beyond that entrance. I think at workshop in discussing it, we worked out a solution where they could block this, either lock that gate or block it with, with the blocks that they're using to build the bins. And if they do that and that's not open to the public, they can stop the, stop the concrete in this where they're showing it here. And that second entrance won't be open to the public, so it won't be required to be paved. And gravel driveway would be a variance, but since they won't be accessing, public won't be accessing that area and it's within an easement, it's not on the site, it's offsite, that wouldn't be a variance. So we are recommending approval with the conditions in the staff report. The one amendment I've made since workshop is to clarify the note on the driveway. And the wording, essentially the wording is number five and I've included that in the conditions of approval that Charlie has. Number four, or number three is the floodplain permit, but number five is that the shared access drive shall be hard pavement asphalt or concrete beyond the first public entrance. And the second entrance shall be locked or blocked or not, not used for public access. So I just kind of clarified that access note. So we are recommending approval with the ten conditions in the staff report.
Joe, on this map it shows that this access easement starts at forty feet wide and as it gets on, comes on back and narrows down to twenty-eight feet access easement. Is that typical for all these entrances like this or does that, does that access easement need to?
Usually the easement's a uniform width, I think the paved area or the gravel area is twenty-eight feet wide. I'm not sure, I didn't, I didn't catch that change in width when I looked at it.
I think it's a pretty wide, wide entrances, it comes in there to Arby's, it does narrow down as it goes back.
That's actually from a recorded flat in the early nineties, so that's, that's what it's been.
It's eight and nine, Brent.
Brent Combs, Thoroughbred Engineering. Yeah, that easement's been recorded for a long time and I think maybe even, maybe in the late eighties back when Mission Enterprises had it, that's when we split, split the tract. And that easement was created because the tract that's on the Creekside used to be one long track from front to back. And to make two tracks out of it, we were required to put an access easement that went all the way back to the trailer park property. But that was the width at that time that was approved, it was twenty-eight feet.
Twenty-eight feet is plenty, it serves those other three lots in the house.
Yeah, it's not, it was never really thought to be, it's gonna be a future city street, so it's plenty wide enough for pavement. You know, if you wanted to put sidewalks down, then that might be a little different issue, but the narrow city street that we have is twenty-six feet wide.
So you want to have any questions for Joe?
We're recommending the easement for the variance on the landscape, on the interior landscape.
Yes, yes, I'm recommending approval of a variance.
Any other questions for Joe? If not, we'll hear from the applicant.
I was looking at that big map that's hard to navigate over there. I'm Raven Turner, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Ken Tracy, he's asked me to come and speak today, I saw some of you all the other night. Essentially his only concern is something that I believe, is it Joe?
Yeah, it's me, Joe.
Joe, I believe, has already addressed and that was our contention, that he only needed to asphalt or concrete up past that first entrance. Mr. Tracy has asked that I ask you all to consider narrowing that definition a little bit more and stating more particularly that he is to asphalt or concrete and he has told me that he's going to actually concrete because it is a, a longer, more withstandings material to use. But for a hundred and sixty feet past the currently concreted area, for a hundred and sixty feet long and then for twenty foot wide. The document that he was showing me over there shows that I believe Mr. Morgan has been approved for, for twenty-four foot as far as the asphalt or the concrete goes. And I don't know if you all want to consider that, he's the adjacent property owner who owns the two tracks that are over here across on the other side of where the concrete road will, will extend up, up through. And that's where the easement's actually granted for Mr. Tracy's property. But he would like for you all to entertain the idea of it being twenty-four foot wide and then a hundred and sixty foot long. He does assure me that that gets up not just to that first entrance, but actually past that first entrance, so that there's some room for navigation obviously with bigger trucks and whatnot. That is the only thing that he has any issue with with regard to the staff report, otherwise he's in agreement and very much appreciate your all's consideration.
So Joe's, Joe, you're saying you're requesting twenty, Mr. Tracy wants the twenty-four or vice versa?
I think what, what Joe said and what he told you all is that there's a twenty-eight foot easement there. And I think if you look back and reference the deeds, it's twenty-eight foot, but what Mr. Tracy is asking to do is only asphalt or rather concrete, twenty-four foot wide, because that will accommodate anything that needs to travel on the road.
Joe, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean twenty, twenty-four foot is our required width for drive on for two-way traffic, so I think twenty-four.
Well, on the, on the plat here it just shows the easement being twenty-eight feet wide, but it's actually coming back in.
On the actual drawing, Brent, is that, are we mistaken or is that correct?
It doesn't show the concrete being twenty-eight feet, it just shows the easement.
Well, yeah, it's just the easement, but.
So if you look, it goes from that forty foot, I believe, which you all noted, and it shrinks down to the twenty-eight foot wide.
It's wider than everyone's at the entrance, I think.
Well, I think, I think one thing Raven was saying is that on the approved Brian Morgan development plan, it calls for a twenty-four foot drive to come on back. And so Mr. Tracy's is saying, let's just, he wants to do what's been proved on that plan, which is a twenty-four foot, which would leave two feet on either side, or anyway, four feet out of the twenty-eight.
If this Morgan pursues, you know, paving and stuff for his, his access to his back track, then, you know, it'll be a continuous, it's just a twenty-four foot wide concrete drive.
Joe, are you okay with twenty-four foot?
Yeah, yeah.
Does that need to be part of the conditions, Joe? Or is that just all?
Well, I think they wanted in there to be more specific, so then he knows exactly what he's getting into.
So you want it part of the conditions?
Added to number five, twenty-four feet wide.
Twenty-four by one sixty, is that correct?
Just add that to number five.
Yep, that's right there.
Any other questions for the applicant? I don't think we have anymore. Does anybody here want to speak for or against this application, you guys?
There won't be, there won't be anything in there that's gonna create a lot of dust, is there?
I'm sorry.
I say there, there won't be anything that would create a lot of dust in that area, is there? I know we've had, we've had that issue in the past.
But this conditional use permit requires him to deposit by sack in U M E or whatever material.
Can you come up to the microphone, please? She can't hear you if, well, they're on the recording.
There shouldn't be anything that, that I guess makes a lot of dust or anything of that nature. However, his conditional use permit that the staff, actually the Board of Adjustments approved the other night when I met some of you all. It states specifically that he has to submit whatever materials he's gonna house in those bins, he has to submit that for approval. They're gonna consider the odor, whether there's dust, whether it, you know, will get out of the bins or anything of that nature on a material by material basis. And so then when he exchanges any of those materials, he then has to notify them via email of what new material he intends to place in that, you know, eight foot high area and then they will approve it on a material by material basis.
We had the same issue over on Connector Road at one point when they were looking at mulch bins next door to a car wash and that was a big issue.
That might make an interesting issue with some water in the air too, all that moisture all the time too with the car wash, but, but I don't think you'll have that here.
All right. Do you have any other questions? There's no more questions, so entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Motion by Mr. Solsky.
With the additional.
With the variance also.
Easement, one hundred and sixty by twenty-four. And a variance on the.
The variance on the interior landscape.
Second by Mr. Shirley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved.
Thank you all very much.
Just sign your papers.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we also didn't get these two sworn in and they've been doing a lot of talking, we better, better double check. So if Raven, Brent and whoever's gonna be talking next, if you raise your right hand, swear affirm the statements you're making tonight and those you've already made are the truths, that's your information and belief.
I do.
Thank you all.
Next item of business is Georgetown USB inclusion request to Sharp property.
I need to.
Ms. Mizell is gonna recuse herself from this.
Because I work for someone who has interest in the property.
Thank you, Ms. Mizell.
Okay, this is a request that's coming out of our conference of plan work. We've, we've got a draft urban service boundary map and future land use map that's worked its way through the land use committee. And what the committee has determined is that we should give property owners that, that live adjacent to the urban service boundary an opportunity to apply to either to be included or excluded. And let the planning commission determine, make that determination and whatever that determination is, will change the map accordingly. And then that map, draft map will still have to go forward for approval, but then that will be the final proposed draft USB, future land use map that will go in our conference of plan and move forward for approval. So the, the only application we got is along the northern urban service boundary of Georgetown. It's the Sharp property, which is the farm west of I-75, north of Cherry Blossom Way and east of US-25. It's a sixty-nine acre parcel currently zoned A1. It's behind the Shell station, if you know where the pilot is, in the Shell station west of I-75. It's behind it to the west of that and just across from the EMA and the county fire headquarters. This property is gently sloping farmland, it has a little pasture area that's separated from the main farm that's adjacent to Moon Lake subdivision. It has a barn kind of in the center and, and an access, the main access is off Cherry Blossom Way. It's generally good developable land, there is maybe a sinkhole or some lower drain along I-75 on the farthest eastern portion of the farm. Our proposal for the USB in this area is to generally just clean up the lines. We used, we first came up with policy guidance for establishing the USB, which I've included in the staff report, but I won't, we kind of went through that last month in a presentation. Generally what we, what the land use committee has recommended is to, and if you look at this slide, the existing USB boundary is shown in this dotted line. And the proposed 2016 conference of plan USB boundary is the colored line. So what we've done is adjust the line adjacent to Moon Lake subdivision to move it up to, to the shared parcel boundary. And we've removed a portion of a farm that has a conservation easement already in place that restricts development on it. So we've taken that area out of the USB and added this slipper here. So those are the only changes currently proposed. If you look at the, at the Sharp farm, basically the, the current USB map shows this area within it, this area outside it. So the request is to include the remainder of the farm in the USB. There, there are some major changes proposed for the area and those are, well, I would say one in particular is the, the northern bypass for Georgetown is proposed to go through this, along the southern boundary of the property. The state is currently in the process of acquiring right of way and it'll take approximately nine acres of the farm. I've included the, the engineered drawings for the bypass, you can, you can see it's gonna be a major road that will change the character of this area. We looked, the land use committee looked at that and determined mainly that not to, not to expand the USB in this area because that bypass is still in its planning stages. Their state is currently moving forward with the project and they funded the right of way acquisition, but that's where it is now, it's in right of way acquisition. Since we update this map every five years, kind of made the determination that until that road goes in, we'd hold off on expanding the USB in this area. Also there's, there's approximately eighty acres of commercial land zoned along the interchange, exit one twenty-nine interchange currently. We haven't seen a lot of demand for that land recently. We have seen a couple of applications around Triport in the southern, southern area of Cherry Blossom. But we haven't seen any expansion of the, of the approved development along the, around the Shell station. So we haven't seen at least any demand for that, strong demand for that land. And since we, we do have approximately, I think, eighteen acres of the farm already in and these lots already in and this land south and around the, the pilot station already in and much of it's own commercial, or at least this area is own commercial. The determination was just to wait until that road gets in before we made the change to include all that farm, since it is a pretty large farm. Looking, talking to the state, they are planning to start construction on the, on the bypass in 2018. Now I think funding's uncertain, so we don't really know if that's gonna be pushed back yet, but the plan is at least to start construction during this planning period. So we won't update the conference of plan again till around 2022. So the construction will probably take place during this, before the next update. So you may want to consider that, but you know, a lot of these projects take a lot longer than anticipated. I think both the southern, the first leg of the bypass and US-25 south widening, you know, they, they took, you know, ten years longer than was anticipated. So I mean, I guess our, our recommend, recommendation was based on that, let's see the road built first before we expand it. They do have an opportunity to apply in between the comp plan updates to, to include the farm. They do have an opportunity to apply in between the comp plan updates to include the farm. So there's, they're not shut out if they don't get in, you know, during this, in this five-year update period. It is easier to include them now when we're making all the changes. So, I mean, I can, I can see both sides of it. I guess the one, the one recommendation that I would add is if you do vote to include it, we, we also give it a future land use designation. We'd probably designate all this commercial, even though some of it, if developed, this area back here probably would be more detention area, but land buffer since it's a large drainage area. But we are recommending that at least this pasture area be designated residential to provide a buffer from Moon Lake. And if developed, there's, there would also be a buffer requirement, so this would be the edge of the USB then. And if it was developed, there's a, there's a tree lot, you know, there's a required tree lot and fence and landscape buffer between any urban development and the USB boundary. So there would be a required buffer along this area, but we are recommending that that at least be designated residential. This gives a kinda good idea, it's separate, it's already got a fence line and a mature tree line between the main farm and this pasture. That's all, I had them open to questions.
Anyone have any questions for Joe? Right now. Let the applicant speak.
Applicant. My name is Bruce Langford for the record, I'm here as attorney for the Sharp family. And I'm here with Brad Toon. He's a representative of the family and Roy Cornet, realtor of this property. I wanna have them say a little bit in just a moment, but I wanna get clarification from Joe. One, this is the only application for expansion of the boundary. During this five-year renewal or examination period. Were you here during the last five-year exam, Joe? I guess you were.
We didn't have any, we didn't change the USB.
You didn't have any applications then?
We didn't recommend any changes.
So it's been like this for ten years? Or ten fifteen years? Fifteen years. That's, and I don't question what he says, but that's really staggering in a way, this is the fastest growing county in Kentucky, they say. And we have only one application in the last fifteen years to expand the urban service boundary, and this application is only about sixty acres less what the highway's gonna take. So that's really remarkable that the fastest growing county doesn't really have to expand its boundaries. Urban service boundaries.
Correction. Correction. Yeah, 2006, I think there were five. I wasn't here, but I think there were five.
Two thousand six.
I believe there were five applicants.
I was better off the way it was.
Well, I think they approved.
So, in a way, what are we talking about? We're talking about increasing by about fifty acres in an area that's already largely commercial. Now, the farm, this farm is, it's agricultural. But Joe could've just as easily given these eight reasons I'm gonna give why we ought to expand the urban service boundary in this area. He could've said this just as easy as what he said. And what he said, there's nothing wrong with that, but there's nothing wrong with this either. Number one, this new road will take eight acres of this property. He said that, but this is a major highway, this is a bypass. This is gonna change that area tremendously. You can envision it, you can see it already. Number two, there's a statement in Joe's report that says, and I'll read it. "The urban service boundary should follow property lands when there is not a logical, physical, or natural boundary that breaks a property in two separate development areas." This does just the contrary, it breaks this property and cuts down through the center of it. No natural or physical barriers, no reason to do so, could've just as easily followed the fence lines and boundary lines like we're asking that you do. There is commercial development, this is number three, there's commercial development already to the east and west of this property, along US-25 and over at the interchange. All utilities are available to this property, everything you need to develop, including sewer, there's a private sewer system up there. What will this do for the area? It will provide shopping to the people, and there are a lot of people that live north of this property, provide shopping to those people who don't have to drive all the way back to town. What does that do? Takes them off the highways, more convenient for them to shop, less traffic on the roads. There is demand, and Roy will talk about this, there is demand for this property. We think possibly the Sharp family has already lost a sale or something that would've been good for the area, Dollar Store, provide supplies and utilities and so forth for that end of the county, the people at that end. They may not come back, they might, they might not. They were interested on US-25. This is gonna try to sort of change that and the interest will center more on Cherry Blossom. And Joe has mentioned the residential buffer, that would be acceptable. I think Brad Toon can speak to that, but that would be acceptable if you designate that residential strip to the left, to the left and the right and to the north of this property as a buffer zone, a residential area that can serve as a buffer zone for the commercial development that we're asking for. And this, by the way, is not a zone change. We're not asking for you to change it from agricultural to commercial, agricultural to office, agricultural to industrial. This is to just bring it within the urban service area. Now, if you do that, maybe when the demand shows, we will be back with an application to rezone all or a part of it, but that's not. So those are eight good reasons. I'm stretching it one, seven. Seven reasons why this property ought to be brought within the urban service boundary. And remember, nobody else is asking. You go the west, east, south, nobody's asking to expand the urban service boundary. And this is only fifty acres minus whatever the highway department takes. So we think it's good, Brad Toon thinks it's good, his family asked him to come and tell what he knows about the use of the property, the projects that could come for this property. Roy will tell you a little bit about the interest in it, in particular from Dollar General Store, so I'll let him do that now. Brad, Brad will come up in just a minute and tell the people, I want, I want you to tell the.
Yes, sir, I'm Brad Toon, I'm the stepson of, stepson of one of the two owners of the property.
And the two owners are?
William Edgar Sharp and Arian Tanton.
And Mr. Sharp lives in Richmond?
Correct.
And Ms. Tanton lives in?
Durham, Durham area, North Carolina.
North Carolina. And your job is to tell these people what these people would like to do, and they'd like to get it in the urban service boundary, right?
Correct.
So that we can someday, maybe, file an application to reclassify it. It's hard to do if you're not in the urban service boundary. I guess it could be done, but it's hard to do. And then Roy is gonna market the property. Roy, any comments you wanna make?
Couple things that haven't come out, number one is the sixty-some acres is the entire remaining area of the Sharp Zone out there, part of which is already in the urban service boundary. So they're not, they're not asking for sixty-some acres to be added, I'm talking about just the part that's between the current urban service boundary and 25, which would be thirty-some acres. So we're not asking for sixty-some acres, it'd be thirty-some acres. The other thing I wanna mention is the bypass is coming. I sat in on several of the land use meetings, we talked about this, raised a question, and at the time, the state had not yet started the land acquisition, there's an offer on the table, Sharp now, there's an offer on the table, I think it was asked of Steven the other day, they're barking up history about his farm after all along with it. The bypass is coming, the funding's been approved for the right of way, it's, it's done deal, they're coming. The, this particular interchange, the Sharps are on the northeast corner of 25 Dela Plain, they'd like to get the commercial zoning in their corner. The southeast corner is the Newville Farm, which has got the conservation overlay on it to never be developed. It's the done deal, the Sharps donated that several years ago. The northwest corner is the county fire department, that's not gonna be commercial, the fire department's there. The southwest corner is where the East Trailer Park and the barbecue place is, there's limits on what that, so the truth of the matter is, the Sharp Corner is really the only corner that's viable for commercial use on that interchange. One other thing I wanna mention is, joking back up, the current proposed urban service boundary is talking about that being the cream color, that's five acre density. Ag is what, what your term you use for it, Joe?
Ag residential.
Rural residential. It's just five acre density. People are talking about five acre density, we've got commercial on one side, we've got small residential stuff from north of it, we've got the fire station on the west side of it, and we've got the barbecue place down the southwest of it. I mean, it's totally a comfort, but everything we're saying, well, these folks are stuck with five acre density. I think maybe we're sticking our head in the sand there. Sewer's there, I haven't talked about that, it is Dela Plain disposal. One thing I mentioned in the works that thing of the day is, is that this is outside the city limits. The family has agreed to go along with being annexed in the city if and when the city ever tries to do that as part of this application. So I think somebody talked to the motels over the east side of the interstate, they would love to be annexed, so that interchange will come in the city and therefore liquor sales be available out there on the interchange. The days end, he gets trucks in there that overnight, they'd love to get a beer. Well, they, there's nowhere to get a beer up there because it's outside the city limits and they don't have any transportation downtown. And so to say that everybody would be against the annexation, that's not true. I'm not sitting here telling somebody not gonna bitch about it, going to the annex, but it would be advantageous to the city to see that annexed up there for payroll taxes and motel and all that. If and when it's ever annexed, the water company will take over the sewer plant out there, which the city talked about doing a few years ago, or the water company talked about doing a few years ago, the city council, they're, it wasn't voted against it. But if that is taken over, the sewer rates out there will go down, which make it more cost effective for the motels. You've not seen as much motel expansion there as you have in town because the sewer rates are so much higher out there. Tip that information.
Rather than anything else that. I don't have much to add, but I'm here to answer any questions.
I got a question for you, Roy.
Yes, sir.
And you'd probably be the best one to guess. So after they take the right of way for the road, and if we designate that top corner up there for the residential buffer, how much acreage would that leave then?
You know, I've talked to everybody.
I mean, we're probably in twenty acres or better, right? I think thirty acres, I don't think.
About five acres that corner up there, you're talking about the corner being five?
Yeah, so which would leave twenty-five acres to add additional.
And round acres.
Twenty-five minus, minus the right of way too?
Minus eight acres on the right of way.
So, so we're down seventeen acres total that's gonna get annexed.
Yeah, I've talked about that.
It's not a big, big piece of land.
Yes, I'm a little confused here. If we make this urban service boundary, that means services from the city will be available. But you've already said that the services are there, the sewer and the water are already there, so how will it be different after we make this change?
It's a designation that benefits the property owner when he applies for zone change.
Why, why does it do that if there's no difference physically in what's available?
The urban service boundary is the area within which we're encouraging urban development, so urban style development.
Which is not just urban services.
Not just urban services, but.
Really a different meaning than that.
Yeah. So beyond the urban service boundary, we, you know, we don't extend public sewer, although in this area, there's Dela Plain disposal that serves some area outside it, but yeah. That's the urban service boundary is the area within, we, the cities said they will provide services and we, we're encouraging urban development to.
So we're really saying we're expanding the developable, right, if that's a word, area?
One of the things that makes clear is Dollar General made an offer on the site on the Highway 25, pretty much directly across from the old schoolhouse there, which is just north of the firehouse. And, you know, they were interested, but one of the things, one of the hoops you gotta do to jump on that is have commercials on it. Couldn't get the commercials on it without being the urban service boundary.
It's a several step process.
That's right. But there, you know, the bypass is coming, we do in fact have people knocking on doors saying, hey, we wanna come in. So a lot of the criteria is there that would encourage, go ahead and include this in the urban service boundary, it's probably just waiting because, you know, the action is upon us now.
I really wouldn't wanna see things go in individually off of 25 though versus a street that went in and fed things off of it. That wouldn't make sense to me.
Brad's got some comments he can make there.
Sure. Can you flip back to, flip back to the area?
Which one's the pointer on here? We've had some meetings with KYTC and met, well, actually, I take that back, well, actually, we did years ago have some meetings with them, but I've met recently with Bruce Monarch, he's an engineer representing KYTC, he works with Strand Engineers. He provided us with the, the construction documents for the proposed road. One thing I would add, so because of the, they're gonna reconfigure this intersection as a part of the development, there's already, you know, the main interchange is gonna come through right about here. And DOT, it will only grant us one access onto the property off of Cherry Blossom and it's gonna, it has to be right there because of the distances between those other two interchanges. Same with on, same with on Cincinnati Road here or US-25, I can't remember the exact distance, but they're gonna grant us, they're, we have to go further north than the fire station, it's up around in this area, they're gonna grant us one access here, that's as close as we can get to that new interchange. So there really only gonna be two access points in that will feed the entire development. Did I answer your question?
That's what I was, that's what I was curious about.
One other thing I may mention, Joe touched on it, but a fairly good chunk of the Newville property was in the, originally in the urban service boundary, and that won't be developed. And so what Joe's proposing now is they've taken that out, that acreage is already in the urban service boundary. If you transfer that up there to the Sharp property, as far as acre for acre, that cuts you down even that much more as far as how much the net entries that the urban service boundary is that we're looking for, it gets it down to.
It really wasn't in the urban service boundary before though, it just, it showed the urban service boundary, but that, because of the development rights being settled off of it, it never was there.
That's right. There you go, right there. That area right in there was originally in the urban service boundary, and simply because of that conservation overlay, they've taken it out. If you kinda take it out, paste it up here, we're not talking about a whole lot of net additional space.
What would happen if, what would happen if the state took four years to get the road built now though?
Dollar General was out of our door in the last few months, we've still got, we've got demand even with that bypass being there. They were wanting to start this year.
Yeah, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't have a road going all the way through though, would you? You don't have a road coming in from one end.
Now, what, what the plan was, was. Now what, what the plan was, was made a deal with them out there on twenty-five, Crossmouth, the schoolhouse. There'd be a commercial, how wide was it, Brad, fifty feet or?
Sixty.
Sixty foot entrance there off twenty-five. That would be access to the Dollar General, but also be the boulevard, if you will, that would go back into the rest of the farm. So that was anticipated as part of that development plan.
But my, my expectation is when they, when they put the bypass through, they're probably going to have right enough turn lanes through there. The twenty-five will be widened, there'll be all kinds of, there's going to be a lot of things to coordinate there.
Well, that's the reason the entrance is going to have to be on up further north away from the bypass interchange. But they've got, the state's got some pretty specific guidelines, how far you got to be.
Yeah.
And that, that those guidelines been up there across the schoolhouse.
But if you went on and built the Dollar General there, they'd be tearing their entrance out five times trying to make, trying to realign twenty-five, wouldn't they?
Well, hopefully the engineers, Brett Minier's gone, hopefully the engineers did that stuff accordingly.
Yeah, those plans are already available. The highway department plans for this road, they're already available. Any construction and anything we get approved by the planning commission, we'll have to take those into consideration. And it only comes around every, once every five years.
Right.
Uh, if they lose this opportunity, it'll be five years before they get a review going and have an opportunity to come in and talk about this.
Well, they could actually apply, right, Joe?
They could apply, but, yeah. It helps to have the comprehensive plan and
Yeah.
the urban service boundary reviewed at the time of your application because you're going to get a lot more attention.
And I will, I will make a comment too, that there's been several months spent on this USB, you know, with the comp plan update with Matt and Megan and Joe. That there, there has been people studying this and they have made their recommendation to, as to what Joe had on the thing tonight, so it's not like it's not been looked at. But I mean, y'all have made some good arguments too, so. I, I didn't mean to interrupt, whoever was. Was it you, Roy, was you going to say something?
It's fair and reasonable under the circumstances, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Yeah.
And we think it's not an unusual request, not an unreasonable request, and it's a de minimis, very minimal request to expand urban service. You'll never know.
Marketing wise, it makes it a whole lot easier to tell Dollar General, hey, we're already in the urban service boundary. Yes, getting the zoning approved is going to be a lot easier than what we've got today. So if we get this changed and Dollar General and whoever else we come up with, it's going to be, this will be a major step on being able to market it better.
I think y'all have made some good comments too, as far as that being really the only marketable corner there. I mean, the trailer park could go away, I suppose, but that is pretty much the only marketable corner that's going to be developed. And it's close to the residential area that could be kind of a mixed use area right there.
That's the reason Dollar General wanted to, they, they've got their demographics, they're looking for a certain amount of rooftops and they're looking to serve all those rooftops and all of that, that's what they're after.
Yeah.
But they, they definitely want to be on twenty-five and not on, not on Delaplane.
Well, they may come back, uh, to Cherry Blossom or Delaplane, they may come back. But the initial inquiry was on twenty-five, but right now we're not hearing from them. Those of you who may not be familiar, up north, you've got Westwood subdivision, Mallard Point subdivision, Harbor Village subdivision, Deer Lake, Moon Lake. And a whole bunch of lakes I haven't mentioned and a whole lot of houses that I haven't mentioned. And all of those people would be able to utilize this area for shopping and not have to come all the way down twenty-five, down to the Long Lake School and so forth to come to Georgetown. But they'll, they'll, if, depending on the stores going in, they'll be able to shop there.
My, my son just moved into Mallard Point two weeks ago from Waxton. And I was up there over the weekend eating with him, he commented, Dad, it's a whole lot, it's a whole lot further to the grocery store to get a lot of, lot of bread up here. And so there is a need for, you know, closer services.
Charlie, one question I got for you is, if we do approve this, does it have to go before the city council?
Yeah, they, they would review and approve the proposed land use plan.
Would that go in with our comp plan update or would this be separate, it just go in with the comp plan?
Yeah, that'd just, yeah, that'd be just rolled into it.
Okay.
Now, one, one thing that was mentioned, and this isn't necessarily a pro or a con, but yes, they can always bring an application in between the major reviews. I don't recall it ever being done. Uh, there's just, there's a momentum now to, to review it and, and there's an interest now. In between, there's, again, I'm, I've only been hanging around for thirty years, but I've never seen anything come in between.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and also as they pointed out, there really hasn't been that much in the last, uh, those, oh six were actually pretty, pretty minimal themselves, so.
That would, that would be my other argument is, I would argue that things ran out way too fast back in two thousand, two thousand, two thousand and five. It made things out of control for planning and zoning because two main developments were started and they all ended up with one or two houses in them and then they dissolved for ten years. So now they're, they're starting to fill out. I mean, it's not just, I'm talking about residential probably more than I am commercial, we, we saw a lot of commercial developments too that look out there at Cane Wood, places there that haven't, haven't changed much in years. Land's still available.
Does anyone have any other?
There's a, there is a, there's a statement in here about, uh, expand too fast, it kind of lose control. Where was it? Yeah, further reasoning for not including the whole parcel is to encourage orderly growth by ensuring the ability to annex urban growth as it occurs. I know, speaking for myself, I don't want us to, to get back into annexing two or three hundred acres at a time.
I would argue what Mr. Cornett said, that with the, taking the part off of the Newville property there, if you put it up there, it's almost the same piece, same amount.
Yeah.
We did remove that off of this update, so if you put that up there, it would be about the same amount of acreage, we're really not increasing, but just a few acres, so.
So let's see, Joe, you're recommending against this.
Yeah.
What's happened since you put that up there?
Yeah. Um, I'm, I'm just, uh, relaying the recommendation of the land use committee and our draft map leaves it out, so, yeah, that's. And the, the reason is mainly the board, the road isn't in yet, so let's wait until the road gets built. We don't really know how long that's going to take. Um, the other is Steve's, what Steve just mentioned, that if you get the urban service boundary too far ahead of the, the city limits, then you get urban development out in the county within the USB with no ability to annex it because you can only annex, uh, land that adjoins existing city limits. So you get into a situation where you get urban development that's out in the county in the USB. They did say that they're willing to provide a consent to annex form, so it may actually help or encourage annexation of that whole area if you get some.
Yeah, that's true right now, that has not been annexed into the city, so there's no connection at this point.
If I could, I said on the land use committee, I raised a question about this property and the answer was, well, let's wait until there's a need. And I'm suggesting needs here, we've got, got a, got a user on the table, we've got the bypass is coming, both of those have happened since those initial meetings were had of land use. So, so things have changed pretty substantially since we started having those meetings.
My only argument would be that I think it would definitely need to be annexed five years from now. Just as soon as this, but, but my big question mark is, I've seen them say before that the road was going to be completed, you know, in two years and two years turned into three or four. Taking a long time for that bypass to finally make it all the way around. And I still don't have that much faith that, that it'll actually be completed in the next two years. It might, it might be four or five years before they get that thing done. And I, I'm still personally, I'd rather not do anything on that corner until that bypass is in place.
Anyone else have any comments?
I think that would be awful tough planning after the fact, to a certain degree.
What's that?
As, as you, as a couple are saying, wait until the bypass is there. Uh, usually with projects like this, developments like this, there's a lot of pre-planning. Obviously, they have been with the engineers, there are absolute, I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, drawings of the bypass through that area, exactly what it's going to take, you're meeting with the state. So obviously any entrances off of twenty-five or Cherry Blossom are going to have to be approved by the state. Obviously, they're not going to conflict with the bypass coming through here, through there, because that would be financially very detrimental to them. So I'm sure this could work hand in hand to come around, you know, and, and still yet, if they've got a better opportunity to, uh, do something with the property north of where the interchange or the bypass is coming through, then they could go ahead and do that with that approved entrance from the state and then to access the rest of the property. So I, I don't see any reason to wait for the bypass, go ahead and get ahead of the curve. Because obviously th- there wouldn't be a conflicting projects, that would be crazy.
Are you saying to go ahead and allow some construction to happen in there eventually or?
Sure.
Then it'd be a one way in, one way out, wouldn't you?
There's not, there really won't be demand for development where they start turning dirt until that road's a real thing. But when that happens, it'll be automatic. There's no doubt about that, if we can get this property, you've got the urban service boundary first, you've got annexation and zoning second and third. Or zoning and then annexation. But we've still got a lot of dirt to turn, literally, then, before they can be into construction on this property. That's why we're trying to get out in front, be able to plan. If you aren't an urban service boundary, you can't plan. So that's why we.
And I think to complement what Commissioner Shirley said, if you think about it with the new exit or entrance off the seventy-five south of here and everything that was brought to us with the conceptual plan, you know, two hotels, six restaurants, strip malls, big box store. I'm so, uh, south of this exit.
Yeah.
Yeah, south of this exit. Um, this is just, I mean, it's been, it's coming, just, just like they said, it's coming. And I think to, to let this go through and, and because we know that if you straighten that, that stretch out there, it's just going to complement what's happening on the new exit as well, because there's, all that's going to have to be widened, I mean, there's going to be a lot of traffic.
The actual highway plan is Joe's, God, if you don't see those, but.
Yeah, I think I've seen. So I would rather be proactive than reactive, uh, you know, when the bypass goes all the way through.
I don't think we ought to say it's inevitable, it's going to happen. It's up to us to determine to a certain extent.
It's going to happen whether we, we like it or not, it's going to happen.
I don't know what it is or not.
Maybe not.
There's no guarantee on that.
No.
Nothing's guaranteed.
No. Things have got to happen for it to take.
Like Bruce said, uh, we're the fastest growing county.
I agree.
The state of Kentucky and nothing's going to slow us down, I really believe nothing's going to slow us down unless Toyota closed. And it would be a disaster.
But that's why we're here, if we're saying, you're saying it's inevitable, then we may as well go home.
And, and also, we've heard for several months that we want to push growth north. This is a good chance to help that too, if you ask me. Get it away from the south, better farmland to the north. This is pushing growth that way a little bit.
There might be some in the north that argue you better watch that from trucks though.
There probably is.
Any more comments? Do you stay?
I, I think, I think like you, it's definitely going to, it's going to be a very sought after area. And I just still question the timing, whether, and I know putting in the USB doesn't mean that, uh, doesn't mean anything's going to happen there, but it still has to go through planning and zoning, I mean, still, applications have to be made.
That really just means they can start the process, they can be considered. It, it really doesn't do anything more than gets them into the process.
So it begins a slippery slope.
Yes.
Because since I think we're in charge, I don't think there is a slippery slope. We either make decisions or we don't. Uh, I, I don't care if it's slippery slope.
It starts the ball rolling.
No, it just gets you in the door. I mean, it may not be time to get them in the door, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that's really all it does. Uh, just like when we've expanded the area before, that just meant they can start the process. If the stuff isn't there to make the demand, I mean, there are places on sixty-two that were in the urban services banner for twenty years. Nothing ever happened there because there weren't either demand, there wasn't, uh, infrastructure, there wasn't something. I mean, there, there's a whole bunch that goes together, this is just step one.
I think the ball's already rolling, we're just helping it along.
Any more comments, questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
So Mr. Solsky makes a motion to approve, but I've got a couple of questions for you. Is this approval with the residential buffer along the tree fence line that Joe has proposed? Y'all know what he's talking about, up on the little corner? Joe, can you pop it back up, or?
The little.
That's right.
Yeah.
That northern.
There, right there.
So does that include that?
I think that the applicant agreed to that.
But you got that in your motion.
And I, I have that in my motion to include that, that roughly five acre residential buffer.
The applicant also stated that they would give a document for annexation into the city when that time came.
Does that need to be added on or is a?
Yeah, I would suggest you just note that that was stipulated by them in the event of approval. And you're now going to approve and you want to include that stipulation as part of the rest.
So to include the stipulation of an annexation.
Okay.
You set still second up, Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Second, Mr. Shirley. We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Wiseman?
Go.
Mr. Solsky?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No, but not, but not strong, no.
What's that?
That's a maybe.
Chair votes yes. So, motion is approved, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've been there, done that many times.
But I think that's one of the most enjoyable things I've heard. I've really enjoyed that.
Yeah.
Because you know, that's just, it's very honest, I mean, it, it really is enjoyable. Because there are times when you feel like something might, or maybe might not.
Been there, done.
I appreciate that, I appreciate it very much.
Next up is the audit.
Yeah, we just need to vote on the audit, uh, to accept the audit.
Oh, y'all get a chance to look at that last one, after last one's made.
You went over pretty good, so.
I'll make, do we need a motion?
Motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the fiscal year fifteen sixteen audit.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Solsky and a second by Mr. Wiseman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Motion approved.
All right. Uh, the next item is the budget, the seventeen, eighteen budget.
It's worse than Monday, Joe.
What?
The budget, there's still, there's a lot of errors.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
You got yours ready, you ready for me, Joe? Who's our engineering assistant?
Perry.
Okay, six lines down, forty-two to forty-seven is nine point three percent raise.
Yeah.
That needs to be forty-four thousand oh two oh.
Let me, let me just go through it and then we can.
Go for it.
Okay. Um, the budget includes, um, three percent raises for employees, we kind of talked about adding the three percent in there. Um, the engineering assistant, we've added duties of, uh, to Perry and he's, he's been doing this for years. Uh, but, but I'm recommending, uh, adding to his job description, facilities manager. He's been taking, taking care of the building as far as any maintenance or repairs, coordinating any, um, work on the building. Um, supervising the work, responding to the fire alarm, he's the, uh, the first call on the fire alarm. And then I've got a whole list of, um, the duties of the facilities manager, but adding that to his job description and adding three thousand dollars a year to his salary to cover that addition to his job description. Um, Perry does essentially same, same. Perry does essentially same, same thing that John does, John was just hired earlier. They're both development inspectors, and Perry has been doing the facilities management for a while. So that would bump up his salary a little bit, he was way behind John as far as his salary. And that was, I think, a long-term discrepancy in the senior and the engineering assistant. But essentially, we used to have three inspectors, so one of them took on, had a little more responsibility and duties. We kind of, when we got rid of the third, we, we got rid of, we, we divvied up the duties of the kind of the inspector that did most of the commercial projects. And basically, the way it fell out is they both have the same amount of experience, but John's the senior, he's kind of the supervisor. So his salary's a lot higher, but they do the same work, and Perry's been doing the facilities management. So I thought it'd be fair to add those duties to his job description, because he does them, you know, even though they're not in his job description. So that's, that's how he's got an additional raise in there. Now, we can talk about whether you want to, you agree with that, or if you want to cut that out, but that's the addition there. GIS technician, it's dropped from 38,640 to 37,08. The reason for that is that's Ryan, Ryan's salary, and Ryan's leaving, and we're going to rehire at a lower level. So we, we advertised the position at 34 to 36, so we put 36 in the budget. And that's 36 plus the 3%, because we're going to hire him before the end of the year, so it'll pick up the 3%. So those all should be correct, the new hire.
Well, on that note, Joe, what about the office manager? Was Mary maybe making her decisions, huh?
Well, yeah, I guess that's true. Mary's going to stay till the end of the year, though, so she'll be through this fiscal year. Well, she'll be halfway through this budget year, so...
Not that we have to pay somebody that way.
Yeah, I mean, so really, I guess technically, we could, we could figure her salary for six months, and then figure what we hire the new replacement at and make that differential. But you never know, Mary might decide she doesn't want to leave, so...
We also talked about the receptionist for 15, or for 16, 17, there's a zero figure in there. We've paid Andrew something.
Yeah, well, that was the budget, that was the budgeted amount for last year, and we didn't have any budget for that receptionist. We hired him off, you know, not mid-year. So we didn't have any budgeted amount for that, we hired him out of, out of surplus. We decided we needed somebody right away, so. There actually, I look back, there wasn't any budgeted for the receptionist last year, so that's, and that amount is, is what we're full-time.
For full-time?
Yeah, at the same salary. Plus this 3% raise. Benefits increased based on the new salary, so it's proportional to the salaries. So benefits went up, all the planning commissioner BOA allotments, all salaries, but the amount we pay for all board members stayed the same. We added the raise in for Charlie on the second page. So all of it should be correct on the first page. The 3% we added to...
We'll up that one, though.
So we can discuss that if we...
We forgot to put his batteries in his hearing.
Office expenses went up $4,450, and that reflects the switch from Sophisity to NetGain. We had our IT through Sophisity, and the rate went up with NetGain. Because Sophisity had an onsite engineer for a long time, and the city was absorbing that cost. And when they switched back to NetGain, the overall cost went up, because we added it. But NetGain, I mean, I think NetGain's done a decent job, and they're local, so if we need onsite work, they can come, like server work and stuff, they, they're right here, so. So that, that's the increase in, the main increase in office expenses. Insurance are all lines, insurance went up a little bit, or is projected to go up a little bit. GIS went down because we actually put a little extra in there last year, because we thought we might need some extra. When the city moved the server, their server over to us, we thought we might have some extra work. But that's the actual cost for maintenance of our GIS software and our fiber connection, which I think that we had a five-year contract with Time Warner, and that should be up at the end of this year, so we can renegotiate that, that should go down next year. So total planning office costs have gone up mainly based on salaries and benefits. Building operations went up a little bit, just for utilities, building, we changed that line item to say operations, so that's mainly our warranties, our utilities, and minor repairs to the building and maintenance to the outside, the grass and so forth. So that went up just a little bit, and you can kind of see where that went up if you want to look at the line items for those office expenses. Plan review software, we had $30,000 in there for the city works, plan tracking software. We've left, that started, but we left $10,000 in this year, because we think we're going to need some, an engineer to come to our office and help us build it out at our office. So that's kind of ongoing, but it's not as big an expense this year. And then we added, as we discussed it at workshop, adding money for capital repairs, and we put $20,000 in there. Just to, I mean, and that's to keep it under a million. So we didn't want to, I mean, we didn't want to go much higher than that, because I, we don't really have any major capital expenses coming up. I mean, we do have repairs to the exterior, cornice is leaking, and there's some rotting, rotting areas in the cornice. We want to paint the outside, and then paint the inside, make plaster repairs and paint, paint the inside too. So those are the, those are the major repairs that we need to make, so that shouldn't, shouldn't be, should be around $20,000, maybe a little less. So the grand total is up about $50,000. We did, as far as revenues, we increased our projected development fees from 120 to 140,000. We should hit 120,000 this year, if we're lucky. I mean, if we go like we did this month, we will for sure. But we'll be right around there, 110 probably, 120.
What were we the previous couple of years, do you remember?
90,000 is what we projected the year before, and we hit it, I mean, we were like at 97,000, I think, revenues. So it was 90,000 in 15, 16, and we came in a little above that. We, 120 this year, we should be close to. I mean, I, I think things will continue to pick up a little bit as we go.
On Monday, and maybe I misheard you, I thought you said you were thinking that the projected development fees would be fairly continuous to 120. I thought you said Monday. Because I'll be honest, I would rather ask city share and county share to increase another 10,000 to 428 each. This way, we know the money's there, instead of hoping that we'll have another 20,000 in development fees.
Yeah, well, I mean, again, that's... It's just a guesstimate, but...
But if you ask the city, it's not a guesstimate, it's, it's a request, and...
Well, yeah, I mean, the to, I would rather keep the total request under six figures, I mean, to be honest.
I mean, it would be the same, it'd still be 998, because you'd reduce projected development fees back down to 120. Because you thought, at least I thought, I heard you say Monday, was that we would probably stay consistent with what we've done both the last six months, the next six months, and then into the following years. So if we left projected development fees at 120, raised our city share request and our county share request each to 428, 429, we'd still remain 998,000.
Yeah, well, that's true.
And that's what I'm...
I'm feeling a little more optimistic today, but...
I would rather have a definite than a guess. Because you're guessing with development fees that we're going to...
Well, what do you, what do you think about this? If, if we took out the $37,462 in the budget...
Are you talking to attorney fees?
No, I'm talking about planning commissioners. The chair, the executive committee.
We won't see you next month.
Then we're, we, we could actually ask for the same amount we asked for last year. Just a suggestion, I, you knew you were going to get it from me sometime during this process, I just wanted to bring it up.
Where's Danny when we need her?
That I did try again.
Pay you just a little bit, make everybody feel like they're a little more contractual.
So our...
If we could, hey, if we could talk Board of Adjustments member, I never, I, I just noticed that. We could talk them into doing the same thing, that's 60,000, yeah, 60, it's over 60,700 dollars more.
You're going to talk us into it first.
I was going to say, the one thing I hear in the public when we talk...
Charlie, I, I, you work, you, you, you work for your pay, I'm not going to mention you, I just...
I have every conference, John, thank you very much.
When you ask people in the community, they say we're definitely underpaid for what we do, most people.
That's just when they see a bad time, we rarely have really bad experiences here.
Oh, we, okay.
The other, the other question you asked is outside counsel, if we need to put money in there. Charlie can't represent us in, you know, some case, but I talked to CAECO, and, I mean, they're going to get back to me with the final answer to the degree they can, but they essentially said if we get sued, you know, and, and I think this happened with the, with the tower, cell tower, and they have to, they're going to represent us, so they're going to, they're going to send counsel to represent us. They're not going to leave us uncovered.
That brings up a question, how does that work for Mr. Perkins? Does he have to, maybe it's none of my business, I mean, but we're talking budget, I mean, does he get paid more?
No.
For all the extra time?
But he doesn't get paid any less.
It doesn't seem to be right.
But if he does... We could put in extra money for Charlie if he has to do a, you know, a...
I'll give you mine, not much, Charlie, you can have it.
How do we come up with...
I've caused some of that problem.
How do we come up with Charlie's figure anyways, about billable hours or something? You have a, like a limit or something?
It's just, once upon a time, it was done, then after that, no, it just went up a little increment each time. And no, litigation and all the appeal, that's, that's never been added, that's always been my contribution to the community.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is too, the differ, there's a big difference here, you know, you're doing, you do it, that's what you do for a living. This isn't what we do for a living, that, you know, so it's a big difference. Same way with you guys, you know? Completely different.
My only recommendation to this, I mean, overall, after you explain the first page, thanks, Joe, is I would actually personally recommend that we move the 20,000, which is a projection of the development fees to the ask of the city and county to increase their share by 10,000 each. This way, we know the money's there, and we're not projecting that our development fees are going to go up $20,000, which represents, if I did the math right, 8% increase? I didn't do the math, I just eyeballed it.
If, if in fact you, we didn't meet that goal of 120,000, then where, and I may have, and I apologize if I missed this conversation, where would the 20 come from then, if we've got everything?
It would come from our surplus.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I just want, yeah.
I didn't, I don't have that figure, but we have more than 20,000. I mean, it's, I'll have to get the number for you.
And the increase is 15%, I'm sorry.
I mean, it, it varies, you know?
But we've got it.
It's hard, yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to give that number till the end of the year. Because we have our expenses vary so much.
Going up by 20,000 is, is pretty good, I mean, because we've been steadily going up a little bit, so.
I think, this is a good budget. A budget's always projected, you don't know what things are going, you don't know what things are going to cost.
We may not get a full-time salary.
Some of you know vaguely what time's receptionist. I think it's a good budget.
I think it's a pretty good budget.
If we've got the money to cover that, if we don't make it, I suggest we keep it the way it is.
Go ahead.
All right, so we just need a, the county needs a draft budget by March 3rd, so we'll have to vote on it tonight, or have a special meeting.
We either have to vote on it tonight or have a special meeting, and I'd rather vote on it tonight to save that situation.
We don't want to make more, we don't want to make more money from a special meeting.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the draft to send on to county.
Motion by Mr. Solsky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, all those in favor, say aye, those opposed? Is that the last thing?
Well, one thing I didn't add it earlier, and this is, we may not want to even vote on this, but we have in our server room, we have old receipts, expense receipts, and other just payroll receipts and everything going back 20 years, and the boxes are starting to build up. And Mary asked me to present to you a request to establish a policy on how long she keeps these old records. And she checked with the city, and the city adopted this State Archives and Records Commission Local Agency Records Retention Schedule. And essentially, it tells you when you can destroy records. And most records say, other than payroll final, final ledger, end-of-the-year ledger, which you're supposed to keep forever, most of them are either destroy after audit or three years retention. So she asked that, I request that you all adopt the schedule that the city uses for retention of records.
I'll make a motion, Charlie.
Yeah, well, I haven't seen specifically, but that's the document that Archives in Frankfurt recommends. That's what state auditors and all that, that's what they base it on. So if they say three years on something, then you're safe in doing that. So no, I, I would suggest that's exactly the policy you ought to have.
The bank, of course, has something very similar, so I, I, we need to follow the rules and just get rid of all the, just, do we have a shredding service?
Yeah, we have a shred, we have a shredder, but we can get a service.
Yeah, but just if there's so much.
With 20 years worth, you want to use like shredded or something like that?
Yeah. So I'll make a motion, you follow those, or adopt the, the...
It's the State Archives and Records Commission, a local agency records retention schedule.
I'll make a motion, we adopt that schedule.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Solsky, a second by Ms. Mizell, all those in favor, say aye, those opposed?
Thanks, Joe.
Motion approved, is that it, Joe?
That's it, yeah.
Meeting adjourned.